Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 1th River Falls City Planning Commission meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I roll call, please?
Moody, here. Reese, here. Wolsey?
Here.
Stiesel, Watson?
Here.
Hinsman?
Here.
Mayor?
Yep.
Okay, next round of approval of the minutes from the September 3rd meeting.
I move for the approval of the September 3rd meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments if there's anybody in the audience that has anything they want to stand up and talk about. Okay, move on. We've got a couple of presentations first. The first one will be a presentation on the Kenny Corridor Plan and Amy Peterson will give us a little...
Head start.
Head start on this, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor and Plan Commission. We wanted to provide you an update this evening on the Kenny Corridor Plan implementation. As you well know, the plan was adopted in January of this year, so we've had a number of months to get things moving. I will pass the baton a bit during this presentation. We've both got the President of the KCC here, Judy Babcock, as well as Kevin Westhouse, our Utility Director, to talk about a couple of different aspects of the project as we roll through. So, we'll talk about the Kenny Corridor Collaborative, both the relicensing and decommissioning process as how it's moving forward, the implementation projects and some of the jumpstart projects as well. So, we'll jump right into the Kenny Collaborative with Judy Babcock.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Judy Foster-Babcock, current President and Chair of the Kenny Corridor Collaborative, a newly formed nonprofit organization in our community. It's a good thing you're so tall, Scott. The rest of us would have to get a ladder. So, Mayor Toland, I think you've heard this presentation before. It's the same one that I shared with the Council back in July, so it'll just be a small update on the commentary. So, moving on to this group, the materials in this presentation were borrowed from a couple of professional sources, including the National Council of Nonprofits who helped us with some of our formation work along with model policies from Board Source. We've also had some materials to help inform the process of deciding what type of organization to create from the Urban Land Planning Institute and the National Council for Public and Private Partnership Studies. So, quite adept of resources that we dug into as a formation team and organization. So, the Kenny Corridor project, as some of you, like Susan and Lisa and Patty know, who served on the commission along with others, was an ongoing planning effort that resulted in the adoption of that plan in January. Along with that adoption was a parallel effort starting in December to bring together community members who wanted to be involved in the next step of community activity, which was to help support the plan from the community side. Make sure I push the right button here. There we go. So, as I mentioned, some of the resources that we looked into is the traditional format for a public and private partnership. The private portion typically comes from an engineering firm or some other private firm that's in the commercial side. That concept model then results in the city and that private entity forming some kind of a new entity or a joint venture or a special purpose vehicle typically to funnel all of the activity for the plan, implementation, execution together. The model that we adopted in River Falls is slightly different than that, but it's still a public-private partnership. What we explored was the role of nonprofits and philanthropy as a support to the plan and what role the community could play as part of that. It was clear that the community wanted to be involved and make investment in the plan because of the amount of meetings they attended and the number of conversations that we had and the number of nonprofits and other agency-type organizations that had been at the table, as well as many individuals who spent a lot of hours talking about this project. The modern process of urban placemaking and planning, as you may have heard in some of your workshops, really is a complex and extensive and sometimes expensive process, and there's some risk with trying to figure out what the best way forward is. Nonprofit and philanthropic entities are willing and wanting to be involved in investing these community development-type projects because it fulfills some of their mission or their service with clients that they serve. Public entities have learned over the years, and we learned in our research, that collaborating with their community allows these urban revitalization or larger-scale projects to happen with more involvement, better acceptance by the public and a better support and engagement along the way. So, that activation of your project is one of our main goals. Some projects may not happen without proactive philanthropic support. We've talked about during the planning process the number of organizations that are involved in hydraulic dam removal, river restoration, habitat restoration, as well as some of the other kinds of jumpstart projects for involving more activity in festival space along the corridor, possibly bringing in additional businesses that might be involved in tourism or economic investment in our community because the value of the place brings them in. So, these reciprocal relationships are an important part of this process. Nonprofits are also really good at using resources and bringing in experts at a very cheap price, often offering pro bono services, and they can bring different kinds of impacts and tell different stories than agencies can. The bidding process is also different when you're not a public agency. You can use requests for qualification and other proposal-type approaches. They're not quite as restrictive or onerous necessarily as city government must engage. The benefit of partnering with the Corridor Collaborative is be able to let us bring those resources, organize that work, and bring that technical expertise to the table without the city having to approve every single deal. They use the memorandum of understanding to get us to that place. So, the model that's now evolving that the Urban Planning Institute and the Public Private Partnership Institute studies is really about five different sectors working together. There's obviously your agency-public sector at the bottom in gray. That's the city of River Falls and all of the agencies, commissions, and boards that are appointed by the city. You have then the private sector, your typical engineering, consulting, for-profit businesses that come in and bring their expertise for a fee and get involved based on your hiring them through the normal public agency process. There's the people who you serve as a public sector entity. And then the nonprofit sector and philanthropic sector. So, if you think of those entities as your typical 501(c)(3) tax-exempt, but also the foundations in our community, River Falls Community Foundation, and the broader region, the St. Cravalli Foundation, fill that philanthropic sector and bring those services to the table. Who questions about that? Why we chose a little different model than your traditional urban planning model? Okay. So, you might see some familiar faces in this picture. This was some of the people, we had many meetings, that participated in forming the organization, having the conversations, doing the research. Not all of them are on the board now, but they did help us along the way, and we were really grateful to them for their insights and expertise and bringing that history forward to help us have continuity with all the planning that had gone on before. So, the National Council of Nonprofits, which we adhere to the policies and recommendations and best practices that they put forth as we formed the organization, really focus on good governance and that transparency and sustainability to make sure that we have diverse financial support. So, we'll be pursuing that process. We're in the prepping for our tax-exempt status recognition filing with the IRS or the 1023 filing, for those that know anything about that work. It involves about a 25-page application, takes about six months to approve. There is a short form of that process called the 1023 EZ filing, but our anticipated budget in the three years of this work that we look ahead as we forecast and work with the city is going to exceed the threshold for us to use that simplified filing. So, we're going to take the long road. The good news, one of our nonprofit partners has agreed to be our fiscal sponsor, the Kinnick River Land Trust, and we've already received one grant from the River Falls Community Foundation through a re-granting application that they supported. So, we're on our way with one of the jumpstart projects, which I'll talk about in a minute. So, we've already brought some money to the table. That's the exciting thing. So, where are we at? So, lots of steps in getting a brand-new organization up and running in addition to finding, recruiting, and appointing a board. And we've completed a lot. That's the left-hand column. We've adopted most of our key governing policies as we prep for that 1023 filing. As Mayor Toland and others on the council know, we've negotiated with Scott and Brant and the rest of the staff's help here, a nice MOU design. We had pro bono legal services, so that was another cost savings to the community to help that happen and a piece that we brought to the table through our relationship. So, that MOU has been adopted as of August, and so we have that framework to work together. Going forward, we've also got a format that we'll be working on to bring specific projects forward for the Plan Commission and others to review through your normal aspects, and those approved project implementation agreements or letters of agreement will be attached to the framework of the MOU. So, you'll continue to see us from time to time bringing those things forward as we need your approval, whatever that is. So, we will not be working in a vacuum. That's the main thing I want you to take away. You'll also notice number five on this list, or actually I guess it should be number six. We have two number threes. They go together. Number five is to get a logo, and so if you've followed our Facebook page at all or monitoring our website, we announced a logo contest to involve the community modeled on your flag design contest that the city ran with Mary's able help. And so, we are pursuing that logo design. So, if you know any creative graphic arts people that would like us to get a better logo than what we have now or a more representative logo, we'd love to hear from them. We'll have a judging process, and the prizes, as Mary asked me, are two experiences to activate our watershed and help people see the community in a different light. The first-place prize is a ride for two hours in a small plane with a local pilot and a guest, so you can see the watershed from end to end and kind of fly over and see it all and hear about the river and so on. It's a different perspective. The second-place prize is Pin's Popin Pizza for a group of six up at our local bowling alley right on the river. So, again, really wanting to live our values and our conversation about bringing people into the watershed, helping them experience the river as a vital part of our community. So, we have a vision that's modeled on many of the same principles that were in the Corridor Plan, and as we look to that future, right, we see both the river corridor being enhanced through the work that's outlined in the plan and a place where everyone can access and enjoy. We all know the value of getting outdoors and getting away from our devices, so we're really seeing that as a key element and making that sustainable through our network and community of partners, both the landowners and the private citizens as well as the nonprofit folks, to create that developmental, recreational, educational, and public access that we've all put into our hearts and souls of the plan. So, we work collaboratively with the public and private organizations. We'll continue to do that throughout our history as we go forward. We're going to assemble technical and financial resources needed to implement the current Corridor Plan, and if it iterates, well, whatever the current version is, we'll keep working that. And the main thing we want to do along with activation and engagement with the community is to preserve the ecology and beauty of the Kinnick River. So, this is our mission and our statement of purpose. I'd like to say in short, we get the money and the people to help it happen. We want to get things done. So, our website's been updated since this screenshot, but we do have an active website along with a newsletter that went out this quarter and a mailing list. So, if you'd like to subscribe or you aren't already on our mailing list, just pop into our website and sign up. You can reach us at info@kinniccc.org if you have questions. Our board, in order to be transparent, has agreed to have our board meetings be open to the public. We are now scheduled to meet the second Wednesday every month from 4:30 to 6:00, either here at the training room or out at the Country Inn. So, we have a couple of different venues for people to come in and be part of it and give comments or hear what we're working on at that time. We feel like that's a basic community engagement. That's part of our duty. So, any of you are welcome at any time if you'd like to come and see us. This is our board photo. We will be recruiting additional board members. Obviously, that's an ongoing process for nonprofits. So, if you know anyone who wants to serve and help us get this work done, we'd love to hear from you. Any questions for us?
Do you have any questions?
Real quick one about your meetings and where they'll be announced. Is that going to be on our bulletin board in City Hall and in other public spaces?
Right now, we're doing it electronically, but we certainly can add some public announcement locations. If the City Hall would like to post that, we'll make sure we keep Mary informed. We talk to Brant regularly. He helps us schedule, so between the two of them, they can help us get that done. That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Just a quick question. You had mentioned that you guys had gotten some money already?
We do.
So, have you already made a decision on what to do with it?
The grant is restricted to a certain purpose. So, if you look at the plan when Amy talks about jumpstart projects, one of the projects on the list is negotiating healthy and safe recreational use of the river, particularly between fishers and paddlers. So, we have some instigation money, I would call it. It's not a big grant, but it's something to help bring conversation into the community about how we do that. If you remember the council presentation, there was a student group that did some studies on some signage opportunities and some community communication. So, we're hoping to, you know, connect with that group again and see if we can move forward. Between our nonprofit partners at Trout Unlimited and the other river organizations, there's plenty of rivers that have done this well, so we're just going to look for some models about community engagement to help the community come up with their own suggested solutions rather than the city having to regulate it because they know that's a challenge when the waterway is public. So, we're looking forward to working on that, and we're not afraid of that controversy. So, if people are complaining about river use, come see me. We'll get them involved. Okay?
Anybody else have anything for Judy?
I just want to say thanks very much, and I appreciate you coming to this forum especially and encourage your organization and you to use the Plan Commission as a place to plug into the city, you know, and bringing these ideas and projects forward to this group for review and ideas and suggestions and whatever else. I think this is a good place to do that.
For the budget workshop next week, I think that will be very helpful for us. We're studying the capital investment plan very closely and following the projects that the city already has teed up because they're often reflected in the plan. We had pretty good foreknowledge about what you were working on. So, again, we don't want to duplicate fundraising efforts. We want to be a complementary organization and bring the right thing at the right time. So, it'll be a close working relationship with Brant and Scott's help. We've got regular standing meetings around the work going on, so we keep a good communication with him, and he can keep you informed.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks. Okay. Up next, we got Sam's going to give us a... Oh, I'm sorry, Amy.
Actually, we're not done yet, Mayor.
Oh, you're going to do the implementation stuff?
So, we'll jump ahead to some of those initiatives already started, and the first one that we'll talk about is the relicensing and decommissioning with Kevin. If you want to come up, Kevin. Actually, that's where I need to be. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kevin Westhouse, Utility Director. Thank you, Plan and Commission, for having me tonight to add some context to your discussion. Some of you have seen this. Some of the council members have already seen this, but to give you a brief update of where we are at with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission hydro relicensing that we're doing for our hydro project, which is both of our hydros. We started this in the beginning of 2018, and we submitted our first pad for relicensing in August of 2018. So, here we are about a year later, and you can see where the arrow is, that we have began the study process for hydro relicensing. Let me go full screen on that. There we go. Oh, that's awesome. Maybe I should just back up a little bit too, and when we talk about the project, it is both hydros like I had mentioned. What we had submitted to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is that we are going to ask for an extent, ask for relicense for our upper dam, Junction Falls, and we're going to ask for decommissioning of our lower Powell Falls. So, you can see where we are in the process. By 2023, hopefully, we'll have that decommissioning notice, and we will also have the relicensing of Junction Falls. Here's the studies that we're required to do by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. You can see in 2019 on the left side there which studies that we're going to be required to do. We have begun some of those studies, and you can also see there's a pretty hefty price tag to those studies. About $420,000 worth of studies. There's nine studies there. I don't think I'm going to read them all. You can kind of see what they are. We are going to have to start, let me see, the riverian habitat evaluation below Powell Falls yet this year. That's a $32,000 study. We've kind of dragged our feet on that, but we're going to be starting that here very shortly. Now, there it is again, $420,000 worth of studies that are mandated by FERC. We are working closely with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to help with offsetting some of these costs. We're hoping that we would have that agreement reached with them by the end of September. Well, now we're October 1st, and we were exchanging emails as of today. They're trying to, the staff is trying to button up their package at the Army Corps of Engineers. That'll be submitted then to the Colonel, and the Colonel kicks it back to the committee, and then they release funding. So, we're probably just a couple, two, three weeks away from getting that finalized. So, everything is going very well with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. The negative is, we're going to have to start some of these studies. We are hoping we can get them involved in this year, and we're not going to be able to share in some of those fundings. But, we're moving as quickly as we can. They are going to help us, but the process with them is taking a little bit longer than we anticipated, just a few weeks, which could end up costing us a couple missed opportunities there. Again, we're hoping to utilize them for about $115,000 worth of studies. We still think we'll get there and hopefully a little bit north of that if we can maneuver the studies correctly. $700,000 project, that's a total price tag of relicensing and decommissioning, and that's kind of the bad news. The good news is, we are making money on these hydros. I'm not going to go through this whole chart, but I can tell you right now, they are producing energy and they are saving the city money on deferred costs. We're estimating about $75,000 a year. We think that's kind of a conservative estimate. So, we have $156,000 in our fund balance for the hydros, and if you take $75,000 a year times seven years, we'll get us to $681,000, and that may sound relatively close to the $700,000 or $705,000, our estimated cost. So, the bad news is, this is going to cost a lot of money. The good news is, running the hydros till 2025 or 2026 will end up hopefully paying for this project. So, that's where we're at. There's nine studies. The studies are expensive, and we can run the hydros, help pay for the studies as we go along. So, where we're at today, Army Corps of Engineers is going to help out, 50/50 when we can get them on board. When the money's in the bank, they said they can't pay for anything until the money's been transferred. So, we're getting there. Any questions?
No, anybody got anything?
Thank you. It's happening, is all I can say. It's happening.
Thanks, Kevin.
No, we're not done yet, sorry. So, I just wanted to run through the projects from the plan from the city's perspective. So, if you're getting the full picture here and you remember from the planning process, right, this wasn't just the city's implementation. There was to be partnerships with KCC, which is now formed. You've gotten their update. These were initiatives listed in the plan that were already started. So, Kevin just covered the hydros. If you haven't been to Glen Park in recent months, I would suggest stopping by. Obviously, that project is nearing completion this year. The community signage program, first phase of implementation this year, Public Works will be getting that first phase of signage up, so you'll start seeing that shortly. The North Main Street Sidewalk Infill Project, we haven't had a whole lot of work completed on it yet. That would be sidewalk infill across from Walgreens on that east side of Main. There's a large block there where that sidewalk is missing, and that project was included in here. The North Interceptor Project, we have acquisition on all properties except for one. We're still working on one yet. Once that is completed, we hope to let the project hopefully yet this fall so that construction can begin over winter. The downtown alley upgrades, we have made outreach to the alleys south of Division, the first four south of Division, and we had one alley that came forward and was interested in those upgrades. So, we actually have a meeting, if it's not this week, it's next week, with those property owners to hear from them about concerns they have in their alley and further define the scope of that project as it moves forward. Downtown Streetscape and Furnishings is something that we're working on pretty consistently. The most recent project Public Works is working on, we had on the trail just running north of here, we had plastic garbage cans set out just to get a feel for where they were needed on the trail. Most recently, they've ordered the downtown receptacles to be placed on that north trail then. So, that's a continuing project that we work on. So, for the next few slides, I pulled the implementation projects in the near term, the zero to five years, so you can just scan through these. And, you know, Judy and I met prior to this presentation. It really is taking a look at the projects that KCC is going to work on and the projects that the city is going to spearhead. So, from my perspective, I see KCC working on much more of the natural resource-type projects and, as she mentioned, some of the community conversations between paddlers and fishers especially. So, you can take a look at these. These are the park and rec projects, everything from the Lake Louise Empowerment area, Lake George Empowerment area, the access, canoe-kayak storage, birding facilities. So, these are all our short-term priority-type projects. In economic development, we have the downtown revitalization plan, the power plant, which staff is currently working on, an initial plan for the power plant and what might need to be done to make that a viable redevelopment site in the future. Access and connectivity, both river access improvements, pedestrian and bike connections, trailheads, the signage and wayfinding, et cetera. And the natural resources and river ecology, which includes the river restoration, the trout fishing learning center, and some green infrastructure within the downtown. The jumpstart projects that are listed, I just pulled the ones primarily that the city is going to be responsible for, and you'll notice that we have dates already set for a majority of these. They're included in the city's strategic plan, and the park and rec, outdoor recreation plan is to be updated in 2020 to 2021. We've got the city's downtown master plan with the same timeframe coming forward. The one that we don't have a timeframe yet for but is on our radar is the city's comprehensive plan update. The Shoreland Ordinance, you've already begun working on. We'll hopefully have that wrapped up yet this winter, and the update to the bike and ped master plan coming in 2023. If you'll recall, we received funding from the DOT for that project. So, as a summary, there's a number of partners working on this implementation, and in the last 10 months, I think overall, there's been good progress made. Do you have questions for any of us?
Anybody got anything?
Where does the city's outdoor recreation plan, does that fall under this body to approve or does that fall under the Park and Rec Board? Or where is that work going to take place?
I would assume that the bulk of it will come through Park and Rec Board, but it will also come through Plan Commission, similar to the Sterling Ponds Park Plan that we're working on currently. That'll be approved by Park Board and Council, but we'll also provide the update to Plan Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Amy.
I'm done now, Mayor.
Sorry. Okay. So, now it's up to Sam. He's going to give us a little presentation on the campus corridor plan.
Oh, that's not it. I'll let you go.
Good evening, Mayor and Plan Commission. This is just an update on, well, actually, the completion of the campus corridor plan, which we've been working on for the last half year or so. And when you hear the word "plan," think in terms of site planning. It's really a series of concepts related to campus-oriented development, and it's roughly, you can see on the image, South Maine and Cascade and a little bit of South Wasn. And with me is Matt Frisbee from Ayers Associates. He's put this together, and he will walk you through his presentation that he brought. And, yeah, it incorporates feedback from Marketing Johnson, Common Wheel Development for some background market research, as well as the housing needs analysis we did last year with Max Field. And we had a series of meetings with administration and planning from UWRF, CVTC, and Brant, Scott, and I. So, I'm going to pass it over to Matt, and he'll take it from here.
Thanks, and thank you, Mayor and Plan Commission, for having me tonight. I'll walk through this, and I'll keep it open too. We're going to walk through the various districts. If people have questions or thoughts as I go, great. Or at the end, that's perfectly fine too. So, as Sam had mentioned, we've been working since about the first of the year on these four districts, and with that, we had representatives from the university, CVTC, of course, Ayers Associates, the city, and then he mentioned Marketing Johnson as a construction management group, and they've had... had related development experience in this area, Hudson, Menominee, Eau Claire. So we're kind of testing the market to say, what's our, uh, what's our bidding market now? What's feasible? You know, we actually put some dollars to a few of these also. And then we had Stuart Schaefer with Common Wheel, that's done some work in the development world with that, to say, what's the, how does River Falls look compared to some of these other communities that they've been developing? And how can we build some momentum? So as we've, uh, let me just click forward here. So as we looked at these four districts, um, the goal, I'm gonna, it's kind of a funny cursor here, but the goal is in each of these four, is to try to pull out a, a project or two, or something that seemed feasible to move ahead with. And then find the right leaders of that. Is it a private development? Is it the city? Is it the university? Is it CVTC? And try to see, how do we get some momentum in some of these areas? And what kind of rises to the top of those key sites? Now, one thing that we did wanna be careful of, I'm gonna be showing you sites that, I mean, there are some houses and buildings and things that are already on these sites. So we're very sensitive of, you know, these are just proposed concepts and options and some overlays. We're not, I don't want anyone to get concerned about, hey, who's looking at my property or anything like that. So, with that in mind, we'll, we'll dive right in here. We did look at the university master plan on what's, uh, what's on their list. You know, now they're looking at a, a new science hall that's just coming out for proposals now. So that'll be in about a, about a four-year window, something that's proposed to come on there, depending on funding. And then a future connection from Sixth down to Wausau and over to sixty-five with the, uh, the extension of that, that boulevard and the roundabouts. Now that's, as you know from a planning commission, that's out there a ways. It's not on anyone's schedule right now, but we keep that in mind as far as future improvements. So we overlapped this with the university and kind of what their thoughts were. And this was their latest on their master plan. Uh, Sam had mentioned the market study that Maxfield did, so we took that into consideration. And then, uh, so I'm, we'll have to see how well you can see this. So the, one of the districts here is the East Cascade. We call this Central. So, might be a little bit tough to see, but this is North Hall right here. Cascade is running along here. We have, of course, Juniors and the Restaurant here, Utilities. Uh, this is the open parking lot for the campus right now. And then all the way down to Spring Street to the next roundabout. Main Street is over here. So as we looked at that, uh, well, we took a lot of, some pictures around there too. But as we looked at it, we kind of looked from a broad picture and then narrowed it down. So we looked at future access here for the university coming into this roundabout, kind of as tied into that whole science hall and that access in the future. And then look at Second Street as it comes down. This is a natural gateway coming to the university, but it's also a great gateway from the university heading towards Main Street. So it works both ways. And then what happens here, maybe on the open lot next to North Hall and then across from that. But then also, what's the next street over? This is Spring. And what are maybe some of the options without going too far away from campus? Potentials maybe for some student housing from a private development standpoint, not from a university. And then we did look down through here, just, you know, there's some other built structures with the churches and the chapel and different things. So there's some areas we kind of felt maybe were not really, uh, in the right place for being developed. And then we kind of looked at what made sense. Um, and then, then we zoomed in a little closer. And again, it might be a little bit tough to see, but, um, into this gateway of, um, Second Street coming into Cascade. Uh, what's the potential of, of a parking ramp that might help relieve the neighborhoods to the north of this, but then also give some relief to the university that is all, is pinched for parking, not only for students, but also for staff and visitors and other things too. Now, parking ramps, as you know, are tricky because a lot of them are subsidized. And there's usually a private-public partnership to manage them, to get them built and different things. So, again, that's, it's an option. And then maybe an option for a, um, maybe a corporate entity that might be there that works closely to the university, whether it's a, you know, Mayo Clinic for Kinesiology, maybe something with agriculture, with, uh, Senex Lino Lakes or, or Harvest Estates, you know, different things like that. Uh, there might be that, that might come into mind. And that might be led more from the university to maybe woo, uh, some of those key corporate clients in. Cause then the students can overlap and have the insurances there too. Then on the other side, and, and I know there's buildings here, but we're just looking at, you know, what could it be with more market rate housing? Or mixed use, I should say, where we have retail office on the first level. Uh, maybe there's some retail. We don't wanna pull retail off of Main Street. So we're sensitive as we looked at these districts to say, what makes sense in proximity to the university that's not gonna take away from other parts of the, uh, parts of the city. But there's, there is some demand for some, some newer retail. Um, there's always demand for some small office. And then above that, could we do housing? And this could kind of create this, uh, this corridor, this gateway connection down here to the roundabout. You know, there is a, a city entity, a piece here. The rest of this is the university. And, uh, so we'd work with them as a potential, you know, could be a ninety-nine-year ground lease with the university. There's other things. Uh, the university themselves, uh, from a, you know, funding and budgeting and things like that, their focus is not really on this site as far as future. Their, their focus is on the science hall, which is legitimate. And that's a, that'd be a great amenity, um, for our community. And then with that, we just detached that. So I, I'm just showing on this side, the potential land mass over here and just, you know, what is the impact? You know, this one has four different lots, four different landowners. We get about an acre and a half. You know, again, this could take on several shapes here, but just what does that mean from a, uh, development within River Falls? If it's a smaller retail with housing, you know, it could be anywhere from two million to ten million, depending on, you know, the density that would be put in there. And all of this, of course, would be guided, you know, by the city through what's the highest and best use of some of these sites, so it's managed well. And then just flipping that over to say, okay, the other side, which is, uh, next to North Hall, North Hall's right over here. And this is the open parking lot, which is well-used now. Um, but, you know, is that the highest and best use for that site? So we looked at that. And again, they're not, university or the state doesn't sell property, but you know, how could that be developed? And so we just looked at, you know, could we do four to five hundred cars in there? And then if so, you know, anywhere from ten to twenty million with, you know, a ramp and maybe corporate office or mixed use. Um, one thing the, the university did say is they don't have any concerns about their, immediate, I don't wanna put words in their mouth, immediate concerns about student housing on campus. They feel that they're sufficient for a few years to come. So they're not looking for that next student housing. But there is a need for off-campus student housing. Um, and as you know, they, they, they tend to find, you know, wherever they can go. And then we're gonna look at some of these other districts here where there are some proposed projects that you're, you're well aware of coming online. So that's the Central District. Then if I zoom back out, we're gonna head east over towards sixty-five. And again, a little bit tough to see, but what we took a look at is from the university here, down Cascade, uh, about around Wausau. Uh, you know, we call it the Moody's Property here, up to, uh, CVTC. Of course, this is a lot of, uh, small apartments all through this area that, um, you know, are, they're well-maintained, well-kept. And, uh, but, you know, so not going too far back into that neighborhood, but what could we do closer to this intersection? So we looked at a couple of things, is, you know, future access potential for the parking lot down here. Um, uh, longer term on that, but then also looking closer in to say, okay, what are our abilities to maybe taking out a few of the older residential? And again, I'm not trying to offend anybody, but older residential in a few areas that maybe, you know, keep going with some of the smaller apartments. And then CVTC has, uh, on their list of, you know, wish list, it's not on their budget or anything, but could they do some student housing closer to their, uh, facility there too? And then also looking at access for them and what's their future growth. CVTC does have room on their site for additional growth already. That building that's there can be expanded. They've, they've studied that. Um, but as you know, with the access coming in there, uh, could be better. And then just the, the redevelopment of this site. Now, the benefit of this is that, you know, this front site is a, is a, is a one-owner site. And, um, you know, there have been discussions, I'm sure, over the years on what about this? What about that? So, we just kind of showed a layout to say, okay, the, the building that's there now, could it be reskinned and repurposed in place? Uh, or does the whole site kind of get regraded and something new comes in there? So we're just laying a few things out and, you know, could even a better access to CVC, CVTC, excuse me, happen through here? Or even connecting out here to Wausau at this location? And again, the focus on this is this could be a, a, a private partnership too, or strictly private and is collaborating with CVTC. Um, uh, CVTC did say that every two years, they have certain amount of money that they work with. Otherwise, they're looking at a larger picture, maybe with a referendum on multiple campuses. And so, there wouldn't be a referendum just for River Falls. It'd be a referendum of all of their campuses together and put that out to the public. So they're, the board is entertaining that. It sounds like they're, um, they're, they're on a growth mode and, uh, uh, creative mode of how to expand their programs. So with that, I just take a look at the, the single piece of property here. And that size is about four-point-six acres. And there is a little bit of a slice here, talking with the city, um, about, you know, this, uh, future connection to sixty-five, an on-and-off ramp or how, whatever you wanna call those. There is a slice of state land here that probably has, um, uh, some value to maybe attach to that, that might not be used for that. So there's a little bit of property here. Um, so we kind of, we drilled in on this one just because we know it was at a point of, um, you know, decision-making time and of course, the proximity to CVTC. And, um, I think the interest was there to, and I know there's been a lot of people talking about that particular site. And then just north of that, we looked at these four houses. They do pop up for sale every so often. And CVTC, you know, is looking at options, you know, what do they do in the future? But if hypothetically, that if these four were acquired next to their building, you know, could there be a student housing piece with that that's directly across? And then maybe a new access point that ties into that. It might be a little bit cleaner also. So again, these are just some hypothetical thoughts on some massing. And then also, you know, what, what kind of sites, um, so this is about two acres that could be compiled to create that. So heading west, we're gonna head over to West Cascade. And over on this side, we have Dairy Queen up here. Main Street is cutting down to the bridge. And then as this comes across, we were just talking about the dams and things and the bridge over here. And then there is a, a student housing that happened here. Um, there is one more project, it's a little bit tough to see in this lower corner, that is approved to go in next door. They haven't pulled the trigger to, to do that. Not sure if they will. Uh, but that's on the radar. So then we looked at, okay, with this district, you know, what is happening in that area? And, uh, what makes sense for potential? This is that one building that's, that's approved, uh, or I shouldn't say approved, but it was in the master plan as a, uh, as a third building to the two that they already built. Dairy Queen's up here and the little retail office and, uh, housing above is right here. So we thought, you know, as we looked at all this area, this looked like it was pretty well-planned and pretty well intact. And again, we didn't want to mess with, uh, the Main Street, uh, heading north here. But then as we look down here, we have some, uh, four plexes, six plexes that have popped in fairly recently. And then, um, looked at the possibility to vacate Vine. So this connection to Main Street as it comes down, uh, we knew that the city's always looking from traffic patterns, you know, is there a way to maybe simplify, um, you know, some of that? And one of them might be, you know, taking that Vine connection out, maybe will simplify, uh, traffic. I know there's setbacks off of the river that you are talking about with the, the shoreline setbacks. So, um, take this with a grain of salt of how far back off the river we are. Uh, this could be pushed back or, you know, or a density to, to push it, you know, this close. Um, the Boy Scout facility is down here. And so what we did is we looked at this corner with the, um, the building that sits out here kind of as an island. There's a street here that the city still owns. It's, it's still in place. It's a glorified parking lot right now. And then a couple of the properties behind that we thought this actually is a, is a good use for a mixed use for if we did have retail restaurants, possibly even a drive-through coffee or whatever it would be. This is a natural site with the traffic signal there, the, the relationship with Main Street. And of course, the pedestrian traffic is quite heavy, uh, students coming across right here. Um, and so this is a, this is a good site for a little bit maybe more of a mixed use. Um, and maybe it's more market rate housing. Oh, maybe, I'm, I apologize. I should've talked with you a little bit quickly about these diagrams here. So the M is, uh, for mixed use. H is for housing, but more from a market rate standpoint. And then S is for student housing. And then the P was the parking ramp that we had shown earlier. O was strictly office. Uh, R is retail. And G is green space. So we were showing a variety of green space adjacent to this. So it wasn't that we were just paving it wall-to-wall or street-to-street that we are allowing generous green space. And also with these two, we'd be proposing, uh, possible underground parking to help alleviate the paved surfaces too. And to help with the amount of parking needed for some of these facilities. So with this one, again, we looked at, you know, what is the land that we're talking about? And how, it's four lots. Some of it is, is city. That's in the middle of this. It's about one-point-six-five acres. And then the reason I drew a line here is, uh, is where some of these other newer four, four, six or eight plexes have happened right here. Um, you know, it's taken out a little, a few of the older homes before that and up to Vine. And again, what, what could we create there for mixed use and, uh, maybe a little bit higher density from a market rate housing? University did mention, you know, we got professors, we got young families, we got other things that aren't really going for the student housing, but they're trying to find something that may, maybe matches where they're at in life and what their needs are. So this development, uh, you know, can range anywhere from, you know, two to twelve million, depending on, you know, how much can be put in there. Um, and again, I, I know there's businesses there and there's homeowners there, but this is, you know, just a what-if. This is a really a nice prime corner because of that traffic signal and the pedestrian traffic and the vehicular traffic. So if we jump south down to, uh, what we call the Broadway District, and again, I'm not sure if you're gonna be quite seeing that, but we went from the bridge where we just let off of, uh, South Main Street, all the way down to Foster. And so we looked at that connection of Foster at that traffic signal connecting back. Um, Kine Connect Drug Rehab is back through here. We had proposed, you know, could there be some, uh, related office back here? It's right adjacent to, of course, the athletic facilities and everything there. So, you know, maybe there's something related to kinesiology down that way that would tie into athletics. Uh, there is a project right here, as you know, that is student housing. Uh, I'm not showing it probably completely accurate. We kind of put it there as a placeholder, but that one's coming before you. And then, uh, then, so we focused more to the north, um, up here. And again, this is that site that we know there's some student housing coming in. We looked at the vacating of this connection of Pine. And again, helping, the Pine is offset, as you know, as this goes back to Glen Park, you know, with this, uh, would all of this traffic flow down through here and make more sense? And so there could be a potential office building here where there's a couple houses. And then looked up here, uh, next to the river, uh, on this particular piece of property. And we did look at this side of the street too, but again, we're trying to figure out what rises to the top of projects that make the most sense. And so with that, we kind of focused on this one. And, and we did focus, uh, you know, again, with the, the river setback. So again, there's some adjustments that have to be made depending on how that's being determined. But this one is a, a one-owner, um, site here. It's actually three lots and a vacated street, but it equates to about one-point-six acres. So it's a nice size. And then, um, you know, of course, we'll be cutting away from the shoreline setback. But then, you know, what could fit there from a, a small project of maybe, you know, twenty, uh, ten to fifteen units of housing, which would be two to four million, to thirty to forty units of housing might, which might be seven to ten million, uh, depends on the density that's wanted there. And it's probably leaning a little bit more on the smaller side. Some of the other sites might warrant that higher density, which might be closer to that two to, or three to four story building. This might be a little bit more, um, uh, kind of in the middle of the road. Maybe it's a couple-story building, maybe a little bit less density. But a good location, good location to the, the campus. So that's my, uh, briefly ran through a lot of things there, but, uh, we did take a look at that study. And then, um, just trying to glance at my notes if I kind of glossed over everything. We did have some good developer feedback. You know, as you know, the River Falls is very good with walkability and amenities. Uh, and all of these sites, um, you know, maybe not as much to the east, but the sites closest to the Main Street, very walkable to other businesses and offices, churches and other things like that. And then one of the concerns the developer had was just our construction market now is the prices that we're getting are quite high. So with a community like River Falls, could it perform a work from a development with the higher prices in, in what's needed maybe for some of the higher rents? So I know there's some, some income-based housing that's going in now, it's gonna be quite successful. And then, you know, so what would it be from a market rate standpoint? So developer didn't say, you know, no, no to anything. He just said, you know, kind of questioning it because they're seeing it in other, uh, communities from Hudson to Menominee to Eau Claire. As we get into Western Wisconsin, they're seeing that pressure of higher construction, uh, pricing that's maybe affecting their performance, that they're not as active. You know, some of these You know, some of these projects are slowing down because they're a little bit tougher to make the numbers work. So that was good feedback from them. And then from the construction standpoint, we got some good feedback on what we thought from constructibility on these particular sites also. So I'll tell you what, I'll just kind of wrap up with that and then see if there was any questions. And we can go the direction you would like to go.
Questions?
I guess I have a question regarding the east side. And what's the window? And I don't know if you're able to answer that, Mr. Frisbee, about when the window is for the improvement of the East Cascade project?
Ten years though.
Okay, ten, ten years, okay. Because what I'm seeing there as a pedestrian, because I kind of come from that side of the neighborhood sometimes as a pedestrian and, and as a bicyclist, it, it is not comfortable making that connection and trying to tie that side of the city with the university. And it would seem like if you were doing development there, that it would still be kind of an island. And the two institutions are still separated when I can see a lot of opportunity for those institutions to be brought together and the pedestrian traffic and all of that. And that, 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 that project is a dependency that's outside the scope of what we're doing here. What I, what I would imagine, so.
You know, and that's a good point. The, the density that potentially could come in here as we look at Wasan and that, that roundabout. And I'm not, I'm not putting words in anyone's mouth from a planning standpoint. But that development might spur something there because it might spur a signal. But the signal's not really part of the master plan. So it might spur the roundabout. And then that next connection might happen in the future or some portion of that. Because that, there might be some shared costs or some shared interest to actually make that work. Because anyone developing this is going to be concerned about that access also.
Anybody else have any questions?
Are these plans completed and available for us to study? It wasn't part of our packet. I'm just wondering if these maps are, are out there for us to look at and...
I believe so.
Yeah, we can give those to you. So we've been waiting for this to be presented. You can send those out as soon as you guys.
Great, thank you.
I guess that's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next move on to some current items. And Sam's going to give us a presentation and, on the draft for the shoreline wetland ordinance.
Hello again. So before you, you have the draft of the shoreline wetland portion of this threefold, the shoreline zoning and shoreline wetland zoning project. So I think the best place to start is to cover these definitions, since it's very easy to get lost and confuse terminology around. I'll go through the presentation, and then we can always go back to any slides that you missed. This is something that'll probably be easy to just fly through once and then revisit. So backing way up, just to the word shoreline, the state has a definition for the word shoreline. This is not the setback, this is not the wetlands, this is just what we're calling the shoreline area. And that's the land within three hundred feet of the ordinary high watermark of rivers and streams, or the edge of their associated floodplain, if that pushes beyond the ordinary high watermark. And then shoreline zoning is, or, excuse me, the, the distance is also a thousand feet of lakes, ponds and flowages. I have reason to believe that we should include Lake George and Lake Louise in that category because they are both listed as flowages. There's a water viewer in the DNR website that we're referencing quite a bit through this process. So then, within the shoreline area, there's shoreline zoning, and then there's shoreline wetland zoning. And it's difficult when you have two very similar terms. Another way to think of the shoreline wetland zoning, which is the ordinance before you tonight, is think wetlands within that shoreline area. If you flip it around, it might make a little more sense. So currently, they're tied together in our existing ordinance, but the state would like to see that separated. So on the next slide, this is the difference between the two ordinance. So shoreline zoning has those seven standards. We'll revisit those in future meetings coming up these next few months. But shoreline wetland zoning really is just uses within the wetlands that are within the shoreline. And again, this is the shoreline area, not the shoreline setback. Hopefully it'll make sense. I'm seeing some smiles. So everything under shoreline zoning, we are not covering tonight, and that's those seven standards in that list. So again, we, we just want to get it up to speed with state statute. They're tied, it's tied within shoreline zoning right now, and they, they got to be separated. And the ordinance that we produced is based on the model. There's a few tweaks that I'll get into in a second that are more River Falls specific. And the state model reflects recent state law changes. There have been several acts related to shoreline regulations in the past few years. And this is the most recent model that we have from the state. So where does the ordinance apply? Well, the standard the DNR uses is five acres or larger. And that comes from an old standard based on satellite imagery. It's very difficult to identify wetlands smaller than that from a high level. But also sections of wetlands that are partly within or not within that shoreline area that are, the, the, the section that's within the shoreline area has to be larger than five acres. In River Falls case, a lot of these wetlands overlap with our floodplain because we have steeper valleys. We don't have sort of the, the wetland rolling hills or flat land that a lot of the rest of the state does. And you have to look at this model ordinance in terms of, it was written for the entire state to use. It was written for a variety of topography characteristics to use. And it was also written for both cities and counties at the same time. So that's where the tailoring comes in, which I'll get to in a second. But what makes it easy is that a lot of stuff that shoreline wetland zoning applies to is already restricted by the floodplain zoning. So, you know, both of them, it's kind of just doubling up on sort of restrictions of not building in them and that sort of thing.
Are we going to be looking again at floodplain zoning as well? Or that's not part of this?
Nope.
Process?
Nope, does. But it will come into play once we get into the shoreline zoning with the setbacks and stuff. Because it does, the characteristics of floodplains will affect our decision-making. Also, all the wetlands that you'll see in these maps that I'm about to show you, these are from the DNR. They're, they're useful for initially identifying where wetlands likely are and what their rough borders can be. But these things change quickly, and they must be delineated out in the field when we come into, when we identify one, when, say, a development review comes up, that might affect one. Here's a graphic that Brandy put together to kind of illustrate what I just explained. So the, the shoreline provisions would apply to the sort of green hashed marked area, even though part of that wetland goes with, or outside of the shoreline area. And it would not apply to areas smaller than five acres. Here's a map using that data from the DNR. Everything in the pink color is a shoreline wetland. Everything in the green is a wetland, but it's outside of the shoreline.
I had a question about this. The areas in pink, are they shoreline wetlands that are greater than five acres?
I'm getting to that. So I asked the DNR the same exact question. Because if you look really closely, it's kind of a mosaic of wetlands, and you see all these boundaries. So I asked the DNR, you know, is it all these individual five-acre wetlands? Or do we treat it as, you know, a mosaic of all these contiguous wetlands? And they said, you know, you really just have to go out and delineate it in the field. So that's the best answer I've got. And this is not, I'm trying not to critique the DNR, but right now they are very at capacity in terms of reviewing shoreline stuff because of all the recent changes. And I finally got somebody to contact me back who is kind of just on hand helping the main shoreline people who are just swamped right now, so. But the good news with this ordinance, it's, there's not much we can decide one way or another. And it's, it's really just adopting the model with little tweaks. So we'll get into that. But if you notice, I have the pink slightly transparent, so you can see where the pink gets darker. That means the floodplain is overlapping with it underneath. So that's, you know, top half of the city. And really, look at it in just within the municipal boundary. Everything outside of town is beyond our control. So really, down along South Wasan towards, south, south of Cascade and north of Cemetery is where you have wetlands that are non-shoreline wetlands, and that's that green patch. But the rest of them in pink are shoreline wetlands. Okay, so the ordinance has, hopefully you've had a chance to review it a little bit. The sections that deal with permitted and prohibited uses are really, there's, there's a whole list in, that the DNR gave us, that you can kind of pick and choose where to put them, you know, or prohibit them if you'd like. And we basically just made minor tweaks based on things like cranberry farming was mentioned in one. We don't think that would be something we'd encounter. That was probably written with Warren's in mind. And then cattle raising, again, within the city limits. There's just things that are really rare that we just will not likely encounter. And then the non-conforming uses and permit approval procedures, those are pretty much straight from the state. There's not really anything that's up for decision-making. So the next steps are review the ordinance. We'll try to answer your questions as best, best as we can tonight. If we can't, we'll get in touch with the DNR again and get you an answer as soon as we can. And then our next Plan Commission meeting in November will discuss what we've learned since then. And later on, we'll do the same with, if you remember back to our July Plan Commission Workshop where we talked about when we get into shoreline zoning, independent of the wetlands, there's going to be two sets, one for lands that were annexed after nineteen eighty-two, and then another for annexed or incorporated before nineteen eighty-two. But for right now, we won't get to those since that's another whole animal to deal with. So we're hoping to sort of bring the three ordinances together at the end and then recommend them for approval, so we can do a full repeal and replace of the existing ordinance all at once. So, ask away. I can go back to any of the slides I showed you, that was a lot to absorb, so.
I just want to make a point of order that the mayor had an appointment at seven-thirty, and I'm presiding over the remainder of the meeting.
Sounds good, thank you.
I have a question. So if there is some kind of wetland alteration that happens, and I'll just leave it open as to whether it was permit not required or permit required, can we include a clause in here that would require the, the person doing the altering or the organization doing the altering to have to mitigate that alteration in some other place in the city? So for example, you know, if, if the maintenance and repair of an existing drainage system was going to have to fill a part of a wetland within this zone, could we, A, either ask that a wetland be created somewhere else or extended or expanded? Or B, could we require that they pay some kind of fee into a wetland restoration fund or something along those lines that could be used somewhere else, you know, anywhere within the city limits, for example, or at another site?
That's a good question.
I'd like you to research that.
Yep, I'll research it. My gut reaction with all my communications with the DNR is that the less we deviate from the model, the better in terms of its compliance with state statute, which leaves a lot up to us to think of every question like this and ask, well, what about this? Has another community asked you the same thing? What are they doing? So yeah, I will definitely run that by them and see what I find out.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I did ask, I asked Sam a question earlier, and I think I brought it up at the workshop. And that is, in the purpose of a wetland and the definition of a wetland, sounds like Lake George to me. So I'm wondering what's the difference between a wetland and a lake? And you didn't, you couldn't tell me tonight, right?
Well, what I'm going by is their surface water data viewer and just how things are labeled. So Lake George is labeled a certain way. I'll go back to one of these maps and see if I can zoom in. Okay, don't think I can zoom in.
Well, I saw how it was labeled. It's clearly blue.
Yep, the bottom half is blue, but then you also notice there's wetlands tied to it. So where that line between the two is would have to be delineated in the field. I'm not sure too, as it fills with silt, does that change its status? I don't know. I would imagine it stays in impoundment as long as the dam is there. But it likely has changed since, you know, years ago when it was first mapped as a lake. So that's a good question that I can run by the DNR. But to our knowledge at this point, what's on the screen is what they depict as lake versus wetland.
Okay, and remember, I was going by purpose of a wetland?
Mm-hmm.
And definition of a wetland? Not a, not a picture?
Right.
Okay, so with regard to what Hal brought up, in the case of Lake Louise, do you have to replace that? The purpose and the, what it's acting as currently in order to eliminate Lake Louise?
And you're talking programs such as creating wetlands elsewhere to make up for the loss?
Yeah.
Should these go away? Yep, I...
You can check that out at the same time.
Sounds like a two-fold question, so I'll ask them the other.
Okay, thanks.
But anytime, a wetland is, you have more experience with this than I do, I think. But whenever it comes to touching wetlands or draining them, then the DNR typically gets involved, right?
Yeah, I would suspect that through our, our FERC relicensing process and those studies, a lot of those types of questions will be answered. You know, how does, how does the removal of the dam affect the wetland and the lake area itself? I think we're going to get the answers to those and...
Or what it's, the action that is happening currently, will it be, will they do something to make sure that happens again, once the lake is eliminated?
Right. I'm not an expert, but I would suspect that...
Or maybe it won't be necessary.
Yeah, with the Army Corps involvement in, you know, the dam project, I think it will be scrutinized.
They'll take care of it.
Yeah.
I have just one question, and I'm trying to kind of wrap my head around how to think of a flowage. And we've got rivers, streams and flowage. And is every river and stream a flowage, but not every flowage is a river and stream? Or is that, how do we?
Flowage, flowage I think is interchangeable with impoundment in Wisconsin. It's definitely a Wisconsin word, right? I've, but flowage typically refers to a reservoir or anything that's, a river that became impounded.
And that there is a, a flowage into the space and out of? Or is it, or it's just an impoundment that...
So a lake that is created by a dam would be called a flowage typically, yep.
Okay. Any other question? Thank you.
Does anyone want to see any of the slides again?
Though they were great, thank you.
All right, well, you know where to find me if you have questions. I've been visiting this topic a lot, so I'll do my best to get some answers for you.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
And the next item, updates and information, topic is cottage houses. Oh, Brandy.
Hi. If you'll indulge us for a little bit of a twenty-minute video. This is something I came across earlier this year on the American Planning Association, Association's website. It's a, it's a program that's being done in California to help provide affordable housing in their community. And it's a pretty interesting video. And if you're receptive to this in the future, we wouldn't mind showing you more educational videos like this. So planning can make a difference. I mean, it sounds like that's what, kind of what you're trying to do.
Oh, yeah.
And I'll give you the nickel tour here of Old Town. This is probably the smallest Victorian structure in the state of California. That's the Tarpe Depot. And this was our original train station. And these were all railroad tracks over here, so this is a big rail yard. This is where the lumber flume from Shaver Lake met the railroad. And that was the spark that created the city of Clovis. So we're pretty much dead center in that one square mile area. Here's our grammatically incorrect gateway to the Sierras. Here's our grammatically incorrect gateway to the Sierras sign. Old Town was designed for pedestrians and horses. It wasn't designed for automobiles. The city's changed quite a bit. It was its own kind of industrial town at the turn of the century. It was a lumber town and an agricultural and ranching town. Post-World War II, you saw some development that was coming here. And it led to something of the deterioration of our Old Town. In the forties, fifties and sixties, it just didn't have the flash that newer automobile oriented commercial centers had. And we saw a lot of the, kind of the stable businesses in our downtown move to other areas that were automotive oriented. So when I got here in 1981, Old Town was depressed. They had about a 40% vacancy rate. And so Old Town began to sort of collapse and it just was not a very attractive place to do business. And so in eighty-three, we began looking at plans going, how do we bring some authenticity? And how do we bring people back to Old Town area? And so this is a result of the partnership between the city and private property owners and business owners going, let's all pull together and try to figure out how we do this. This is a relatively new fire station. We took the old Clovis Grammar School and we made it the center of the building. So these arches that you see reflect the old Clovis Grammar School. Centennial Plaza is a fairly recent plaza. So we have these now somewhat mixed use developments that are commercial first floor, office second floor. So all this is pretty much just in the last year or so.
And it wasn't this way in the eighties.
Oh, no. It was, everything was painted brown and beige, like that was the cheapest paint they could buy. And it just, on a day like this, it was just depressing. But what we found with our first plan was we, we concentrated on the pedestrian environment of Old Town. But all of a sudden we started seeing concentric rings of vitalization in the residential areas. And that was kind of an unintended affect. You know, we really didn't think about that and didn't plan for it. But it turned out that people liked the Old Town area enough that they've started revitalizing their homes because they wanted to live down here because it was real. And there were things that were happening. So these are kind of boutiquey little neighborhoods here. They're small little homes, you know, these probably go back to 1900 or so. You know, so here's where these homes are on the front of a hundred and fifty foot deep lot. And they have alleys where you had really attractive homes on the front and a lot of garbage in the back. We did a specific plan update a couple of years ago. One of the things we looked at was the alleys in Old Town. There are a lot of old lots. They're 50 feet wide. They're a hundred and fifty feet deep. They have alleys on the back of them. And so you ended up with a really nice house out front. And then you ended up with a whole backyard and an alley full of junk cars and all the deuteritis of people's lives over the period of time. Yeah. So here's like a little alley that runs through there. That was not bad, but it could look a lot better with some units that are, that are facing onto it. So the idea came up, why don't we look at a program where we can encourage people to do second units on the alley? Second units are allowed by right in the state of California. And maybe by encouraging that, we could come up with building plans that can be plan checked already. You can hand them over to people that could get a building permit and immediately get going with it. I think we have 11 building permits out right now, seven buildings under construction. Here's one of our cottage homes. It's not exactly your tiny homes, but it's kind of a hybrid between an accessory unit and a tiny home. This is all one lot. The other home, I don't think the homeowner lives on the property. I think it's a rental unit and they were interested in developing another rental unit with it.
So in a sense, it would be two homes on one property?
Yeah. State law says by right, anybody can build a second unit on their property. This one, it has an orientation toward the alley. So your front door, your front windows face the alley. And we're thinking, get enough of these and the alley becomes a pedestrian street. And you begin to develop a neighborhood down something like this. So you can see there's a little bit of a setback. They're required to have a landscaped area between the unit and the alley. So this, this will get greened up here. There's a parking space that will sit here where the, where the temporary John's at. The older parts of town had alleyways and I think it was residual where you actually had the horse barn out back or it was just the standard of subdivision at that time. Of course, post-World War II, you just didn't build alleys anymore because it was automobile oriented. So in looking at this type of environment, again, you end up with alleys that are kind of utilitarian and not much in the way of residential.
So the idea is to turn an alley into, let's say, part of a city in the sense that instead of just having a skit, you just actually can have a community going, right? How you make that happen?
I think we look at it like any development, it has to make financial sense for somebody to do. Because we're not going to pay them to do that, but we could afford to have a set of plans done that 40 different property owners could use. That was our thinking is if we spent $9,000 for a set of plans, multiply that by 30, that's how many units you'll get out of it if you can give those plans free to people to utilize. This floor plan is about, uh, 400 square feet of livable area. We're standing in what would be the, the living room right now. This wall here is an option. So the, the bedroom sits back here. This could be a studio. There's also an option to have French doors. I could see why you might not want to have French doors on the alley. This is the kitchen area, refrigerator, stove, venting. And then this back room, this is the bathroom back here. I think this is the washer dryer back here. Yeah, here's, here's the plumbing. It's designed to be able to take a stackable washer dryer. So you don't have to go to the laundromat. It, it's a complete dwelling in it. It's also designed, if you're back to back with another house, it's designed to give the other residents some privacy. So you might be able to have a little backyard back here combined with a fence separating you from somebody else's backyard.
Yeah, but it's right, it's pretty, fairly close to the neighborhood. There's no certain amount of setback from the house.
Yeah, there, there's a minimum setback by code. I think you have to be four feet away from the other structure. So it's close, but it meets building standards. Normally if you were to do a second unit, you would come in and have a set of drawings prepared by a building designer or an architect. That would probably cost nine, $10,000. You would then go to the building department and get a plan check. You'd have to get those plans planned check specifically for that site. You're talking another couple thousand dollars to do that. There's no, it, the, the units are already planned checked. So you don't have to get them planned checked. There's a cost involved with that. You don't have to get them designed. You know, we come out and we look at your property and make sure it fits. You know, that there's no sewer lines running under the site, that there's nothing that constrains the development. Cause we don't want to get somebody started on something they can't finish. So each property is kind of unique in Clovis. Um, we look at that, if it fits, you get your set of plans, get your building permit and get going.
And what's the typical rent bid for something like this?
What we're hearing, there's another one up the alley that plans to rent for 700 bucks a month. We've heard some other folks that would rent for maybe $900 a month. And so they're going to see a positive cash flow based on their rental. So they may go get a loan, but they're going to be able to pay off their debt service immediately. And we're thinking as other people see that, they may be interested in doing the same thing.
The city, I think, wants to clean up the alleyways and have more affordable living downtown, Old Town. And I am going to do that, but then at the same time, I'm going to find, trying to find somebody that might be able to help take, take care of my dad when he gets older. He lives, he lives right here. He lives next door. I thought it might be a good idea to maybe have somebody live there and eventually have to maybe look after him and.
So like a caretaker cottage?
Yeah. I was going to put a garage here, you know, a covered garage for an RV. And then, uh, when I went down to the city, a friend of mine who works there said something, said something to me about the program. So then I went home and I got thinking about it and I thought, you know, that's a, that's a better idea than what I had. So then I met Maria and she got me started on the permits and the way we go.
So then your costs are?
My costs would be like any other cost of building the house minus the plans. And I think the permit fees were discounted, like sewer hookups and things like that.
That's, that's the, one of the biggest savings is not having to do the separate lateral connections. Yeah. So that's what they're saving money on as well. Yeah.
Yeah. I think probably for the average house, you're looking at about nine or $10,000 for those fees. And I'm into it a thousand, even though we're pulling power from here.
Okay.
We can read how much energy this house uses. There'll be one of these on this panel over here. Just haven't gotten that far yet.
And you didn't do any extra water metering or anything like that? It's all just from the main house?
Correct. I'm just saving some money there. Plus the city gives you the plans for free if you live in their area. So it has, it has to back up to an alleyway.
And this alleyway before, what, what was here? Was it just a fact?
I'm assuming the alleyway went through. It did go through many years ago. It went through and then when they quit using alleyways, they, they box that in over there and there's houses over there now. But then this alleyway goes right to Maria's office. If you look right down the street, it goes right down to Maria's office.
So here are the floor plans for.
Basically the floor plans are all, uh, 400 square feet or less livable area. There's basically three different, uh, floor plans that are available. Each floor plan has three different elevations to it. These are all one bedroom or studios. They're kind of convertible either way. All of them are less than 400 square feet of internal livable area. So we looked at a couple of them saying, okay, this kind of represents the design of our housing stock. Clovis was a worker community. It was a lumber town back at the turn of the century. So you see a lot of these little kind of homes there already and thinking, well, maybe we can kind of pick up on that style. The architect came up with a couple of plans that way. And then there was also a desire to look at doing a plan that had a garage below. And so this is our third plan. It actually has a two-car garage underneath it. It's lifted up. I like it because it has kind of the outdoor patio, a little bit of a view into the neighborhood. What was interesting was working with a building designer, they had to meet code. They had to meet their Title 24 requirements and energy requirements and all of this. And we wanted to control the architecture a little bit from the standpoint, you get a free set of plans. You can't just build a stucco box. It has to have some architectural integration to it, has to fit the neighborhood.
They have three different plans and they have two, three different elevations. I was kind of pigeonholed into using this particular one because it's a rectangle. It fit on this property. I would have rather picked number one, but it's a square. And squares didn't work good here. So I had to pick a rectangle, which 16 by 31. And the plan one is.
21 by 23.
Yeah. So see, it's more of a square.
Okay.
This is the living room and kitchen. Uh, TV goes up there. Now you can see I'm, I'm just, I'm putting cabinets in right now. But yeah, this is, this is the, the living area, if you will. Yeah. So there's a, a stackable washer and dryer that goes in here. Uh, bathroom, a bedroom. And you can, you can get this model and have it a studio if you would like. So you would knock all that wall out right there and this would be one big room, which would, which would really open it up. If you do it this way, you have a closet space and you have like a linen closet right here. But you know, if you're a single person, a college student, they would probably rather prefer the open floor plan. Have like a Murphy bed or a drop-down bed. There's enough space in there for one person, possibly two, but that's it.
That's a generous bathroom, huh?
It is. Well, a good friend of mine is building one also not very far from here. Yeah, it's just a shower.
So you know, other people were building these. I mean.
Yes.
And people like the idea.
Oh, yeah. I mean, when you, when you can put another dwelling on a piece of property that you already own, I mean, that's, you're crazy not to do it. Up the equity of my house, you know, of the property. It'd be different if I had to buy the land and everything, but I already own the land. And there was a big, there was a probably a hundred-year-old pomegranate tree right here. Huge. Almost cried taking it out.
So then you were spending, do you have an idea what it's going to cost you?
Oh, I can probably give you right down to a hundred bucks. So I'll be into about 57,000.
Of materials?
And labor.
Including your labor? Okay. So you calculated your labor?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. Okay. And you could rent this for what if you were going to rent it? Any idea?
Oh, I'm going to rent it. He, he's good right now.
So you'll rent it right away?
Oh, yeah. There's people come, if I'm here on a Saturday working, there'll be 10, 15 people come by.
And ask about renting?
About renting it or, or building one. You can see the eaves of the house, how close they are, see?
Do you know how far you had to be from the main house?
I did know. It's four or five feet. It was close, but it wasn't much of an issue. But it, but it did make us use plan number two, though.
What did rents like around here? What could you get?
If I furnish it, which I'm going to fully furnish it, so probably 850.
850 a month?
Mm-hmm. It'll take me about seven years to recoup my money, not including the property value. So if I ever decide to sell both of them, you know, I, I'll get the equity in it and, but I don't plan on selling them, so.
This is where one of the cottage homes is. This is another one of the cottage homes over here. And then there's another one that's like around, right here.
This whole thing is Clovis?
The whole thing's Clovis. Yeah.
This is a very limited program right now?
Yeah, right now it is. So it's right here, the boundary of Old Town. So it would be like this.
Old Town Clovis was the original square mile when the city was incorporated back in 1913, I think it was. And so our specific plan relates to the Old Town area. This is the area that has most of the alleys in it. So it's kind of an old style of development in our town. And this is what would be applicable in terms of the cottage program utilizing the alleys for development.
So you've had in one square mile, 11 people so far.
Yeah. I think we're kind of surprised by the uptake from folks using it. So this is an experiment. We're going, I don't know if this is going to work or not. And all of a sudden we just started getting interest in permits.
So what we did was, um, when we first brought the program out, I did a mass mailing. And we targeted every single property that we saw that could fit a cottage home. And, um, after that, we, you know, we got all 100 plus lots that they'd be able to do a cottage home on.
300 plus just in this area?
Just in this area.
It's one square mile?
Yeah. And this one, he got his permits and within a month he had the whole building standing. So it's something that could be built pretty fast.
We looked at other programs. We looked at some of the, like the, the tiny house programs. The city of Fresno, our big sister to the west, has a program. I don't know that they've done any yet. And so we were looking at it in terms of, so what's the value? And how do you encourage people to do this? And it seemed like one of the things was if it's a movable shelter or a temporary shelter, it may be of interest to somebody that wants to live in one, but it may not be interest of a property owner that would want to have one on their property. And so we kind of approached it a little bit differently going, well, how can we encourage property owners to come in and do this? And yet provide small living spaces in a small urban environment that would be attractive and usable? This is actually our specific plan. This is our, our central Clovis specific plan. And it was to try to build on the success of where we were at over the last 30 years of Old Town. And this is the page that deals with, uh, at that time we called it pedestrian residential. We didn't know exactly what we were going to call this program or what we were going to do. But I think this visual kind of gives you an idea of how an alley could look. And we kind of put it in there going, hey, you got a house on an alley. It doesn't have to just be full of trash cans and power lines. I think density is part of it. These lots are about 6,000 square feet, so you get about four units per acre. What happens now is that we've increased it potentially to eight dwelling units per acre by including second units. So you had the area to do it. You had people that would receive some financial gain by doing it. You have people that want to live in Old Town and here's the opportunity to be able to do that.
So planning can make a difference. I mean, it sounds like that's what, kind of what you're trying.
Oh, yeah. And if you have a city council that will stick to their plans, that's a huge difference. And it may happen in 30 years, but we understand that's what it takes to be able to do that.
Well, thanks for, for watching. Obviously we're a lot different than California and this is just an idea to get conversation going about different ways to implement plans in our community. Any thoughts or comments?
I like that the city provided five plans. But this takes infill to a whole new level. There's something to be said for green space. That one guy had concrete to the curb.
Mm-hmm. I, I don't recall. I think I looked it up when I saw the video, but I don't.
I know that sometime back, um, we did, uh, have some proposals for what we were calling, um, well, basically accessory dwellings, granny flats or, or, or things like that. Um, that could possibly be on the alley or built above a garage and that type of thing. And, um, didn't turn out to be, uh, the right time for that, but that may be a, a different situation now. So I'm open to, um, still looking at this a little bit further.
I am too. I think it's, um, you know, it's kind of a hybrid between the common sized home and the, the tiny home movement. And I, I think there's a lot of people who think that's a nice idea, but they're not really want to do that. And then you couple that with affordable housing issues. And I think it could be something that's workable. So I kind of like the size of that, the square footage. Just looking at other time in my life where that would have been ideal, um, as a single family dwelling. Just looking at other time in my life where that would have been ideal as a single-family dwelling too. So I don't know where we go from here with that.
Nowhere. It was just an educational video, adjournment.
Okay, well, any other comments? Let's see, next item, calendar. Next planning commission meeting, November 5th at 6:30. Everybody get that on your calendar and from there, do I have a, I hear a motion for adjournment?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.